Call this meeting to order. The first item is if you have a cellphone, please either turn it off or put it on vibrate, so that we don't have it going off in the middle of the meeting. If anyone feels the need to take or receive phone calls, please take it out to the lobby area. Right now, I'm going to ask for a moment of silence. Within the last two weeks, the Budget Committee lost one of its members, Stephen DeCaro. A moment of silence, please. Thank you. Now, I'm going to ask you to all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Flag is behind you, and I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Even though they're such a small group, I did want to make sure to thank the approximately 250 brave souls who came out Tuesday and voted at the polls. Two years in a row, whatever thought, right? I also want to thank our supervisors and checklist, our ballot clerks, the Select Board, and Assistant Town Moderator for all their collective efforts there on Tuesday at the polls. They too had to travel in some of the worst conditions, especially at the end of the day around 8 o'clock. As in previous town meetings, I want to make sure that any people who are not registered voters in the town of Tilton need to be behind the back railing, and I'm hoping that those who have seated inside the railing will look around and make sure that everyone seated around you or next to you is a registered voter in the town of Tilton. As you checked in today to your position, pink voter card. When I call for a standing vote, I am going to ask you to hold those pink voter cards up like this. I have two Assistant Moderators, one is Bob Hardy and another one down here is Linda Burns, and she will, Linda will count people on this side, Bob will count people on that side, and if there's anyone who is standing in the back of the room behind the rail, their vote will not be counted even if they're holding up their voter card. I want you to understand that now. My name is Chuck Mitchell, and I'm your Town Moderator, and by the way, thank you for your vote in re-electing me to this position. To my left and your right over here, second over, is Sidney Reinhardt, who's our Town Clerk and Tax Collector. Today, we have three appointed Assistant Moderators. To my immediate left, Helen Hanks. Right down here in front, Linda Burns, and Bob Hardy, and one more backup Assistant Moderator way over there running the projector is Kathy Mitchell. That actually makes four. To my right over here is the Chair of the Select Board, Catherine Dawson, and she will introduce the rest of the Select Board.
To my right, we have Pat Constantino, John Scanlon, Ashley St. John, and your father, our Finance Officer, Ted Pearson, and our Town Administrator Joyce Fuwala.
Administrative Assistant, Yale. Yale, Virginia, Yale Beast, Gustak, and Bestwick, excuse me. And our Public Works Director, Brock Mitchell. Thank you. Now, over on this side, we have the Budget Committee. The Chair is Jane Alden. Would you please introduce the rest of your members? You have a microphone.
We've got a microphone down there.
We may need to bring that back.
I'll stand up. I'm fine. I'm so quiet, sorry. To my left now is Christine Anthony, and Wayne Gronk, and as I said, one of our members passed away two weeks ago, and we will miss him terribly. And one of our members, Arthur Damas, is working, and Joe Jessman will be replacing us soon, I hope. Okay, thank you.
Yes, I've been asked for a point of personal privilege by one of the Select Board as they have a small presentation. Pat, would you like to start, please? Oop, John Scanlon, excuse me. Down, you're right.
Thank you, everyone. This town report this year is dedicated to our friend and colleague Joyce Fuwala, who was retiring after a career that has spanned over 30 years of public and nonprofit service, the last 11, which has been an our town administrator. Definition of dedicated, devoted to a task or purpose, having single-minded loyalty or integrity. This sums up Joyce's work at the determination drive during her tenure with the town. Joyce volunteered her time while she was Northfield's Town Administrator to help the Board Selectment and Administrator manage Tilton's position was vacant. About a year after intern, Administration held a position. She was hired to take the helm. Over the years, she's been selfless with her time and effort, often exceeding a 40-hour week, working late into the night and onto the weekends. She has served the town's people in various ways during these years, most notable and yet probably least visible to those outside town government, is how she shares her perspective advice and counsel to Selectmen and other Board Commission members and town employees. She's adept at promoting compromise and balance, steering government governing boards clear of ethical, legal, and procedural pitfalls. Joyce often cites her most important role as managing risks, and she has done so for the past 11 years in spite of political crosscurrents, unyielding personalities, board divisions, and complex problems. While these conflicts and difficulties may have derailed others, Joyce applied her best qualities, her strength of character, her perseverance, and steady guidance to push for what was right, moral, legal, and in the best interest of the town. She has served with the highest regard for the citizens and taxpayer while upholding her professional and ethical standards. Joyce cares about people and the democratic process, and she is one individual who truly strives to make government better on a day-to-day basis. Her quiet manner and optimistic view of public service has helped her move both people and projects forward in her quest to improve life in the town of Tilton. We, the Board of Selectmen, town employees, friends, and coworkers will miss her and will thank her for her service to the town as we wish her our very best in the future. And this is just something, a little token, that we'd like to present Joyce today because in October, we're going to have one heck of a retirement potty for she'd like barbecue at Riverfront, and we'll invite you all back for that. So Joyce, it's a token of our appreciation today from the town. Well, I did it. When they hired me back in 2007, I says, "You guys, you've got me till I retire." And we stuck it out, didn't we? And we did a lot, and I'm just so grateful to the, every day when I come in, I swear to God, swear to God, this is my attitude, I'm just so grateful to have a wonderful job and wonderful people to serve and wonderful coworkers, and I just couldn't ask for a better, a better life or a better job. It's wonderful. It's sad but sweet, and, but I'll still be around, and I still, I'll still be living in Northfield, and I'm just going to take a couple of years to enjoy some time with my family, and, excuse me, and I'll be starting a second career. I've gone, I'm currently enrolled at the New Hampshire Technical Institute to be a licensed alcohol and drug abuse counselor, so something that I think I can, I still have some, some youth energy to keep giving back to the community. So thank you so much. I appreciate, I especially appreciated the health insurance. Thank you.
Chief Cormier was also expected, but he's got a Make-A-Wish Foundation conflict this morning, and he also has something for Joyce, which when he is here, we will interrupt time, make time for him. Scott?
Mr. Moderator, people don't realize, before Joyce became the Town Administrator in Tilton, when she was a Town Administrator in Northfield, when we were helping to fund the school funding, when I was over there as Chair of the School Funding Committee to address the town in Northfield, she opened her door with the blessing of the Select Board over there, she worked village, to get us the, to be able to pass the current school funding that we have. And it was raising her taxes while she was doing it, as she said, she lives in Northfield. So she is for the best of everybody, not only in Tilton but in Northfield, but also in the district. Thank you, Joyce.
Thank you for your time, Mr. Moderator.
I remember that one meeting, when, that one particular meeting, when the river was hitting the road, Catherine Dawson was getting up to walk out, and we're running after, "Oh, Catherine, come back, come back." Remember that? Okay, I know, I know why I have to... They, everybody, the, the heat is erratic in the town hall, that's what you get for working in a building that was built in, what, '79, was it? But I'm always cold. And so the heat is cranked up, and people go, "God, it's so hot in here, how can you stand it?" I'm always cold. Plus, having the room that hot sometimes encourages people that like, like to talk too much, that they, they mention, "I'm sweating."
The next thing on my agenda here, as I go through this, was the election results, but I think all of you have seen them up on the screen behind me. Any questions? Okay, the next thing is the Moderator Rules. They are printed this year in the Our Town Report, if you're not in the Town Report, on the, well, not with the warrant, on the papers that you picked up today. I'm always, probably say the same thing, the word to me, for today, to me, is brevity. Be as brief and concise as possible when speaking at the microphone. No one wants to hear someone ramble on and on. So a couple of key things. By the way, I'm not trying to tell you what to do, but I'm trying to give you advice on a few motions. The first one here I want to mention is closing debate. You cannot go to the microphone and speak on a warrant article, and then when you finish, say, "And I move to close debate." No, you want to close debate, you can't speak for a motion first. You must get called on, and then you may move to close debate. And by the way, closing debate is a two-thirds majority. Tabling a motion, tabling a motion does not kill an article or any motion. What it does mean is that you don't wish to deal with it right now, and that in fact it can be brought off the table anytime until the meeting is adjourned. If restricting reconsideration, that is Rule Number 20, that can be made anytime after a vote on a, an article has been declared as passing. And if you wish to restrict reconsideration, which has been the past, sometimes she was as protecting your vote, and if that should pass and it only requires a simple majority, it means that no one could ask for reconsideration on that later. The next one is Rule 19, motion to reconsider. You are supposed to have voted on the prevailing side, the winning side, to ask for a reconsideration. The intent being that you have now information which would perhaps cause you to change your mind. It's not to be used by someone who was a loser on an article and wanted to bring it back for a vote later. Anything that is reconsidered cannot be back, brought back before this room today. It would have to be brought back at least seven days later and would require another special town rule. So that one needs to be used very, very carefully. Hopefully not at all. I intend to allow everyone in here a chance to speak once before speaking a second time. Please be courteous and kind when you speak. Do not try to single out any individual. We have established time limits, that anyone who makes a motion for a warrant article can have up to five minutes. Anyone who is responding and speaking before or against a motion, a two-minute time limit. My Assistant Moderator will hold up a sign that will tell you, "Your time is running out," like in a minute forty-five, and then when time's up, she'll flip it over and say, "Time's up." And no, not, we are not going to play music like they do at the Oscars, but we thought about it. Anyone moving an art warrant article or anything or anytime you speak, please make sure to clearly state your name when you go to the microphone. Our Town Clerk is responsible for keeping accurate minutes of the town meeting, and she needs to be able to hear the names clearly. Lastly, Rules 23 and 24. Any decision made by the Moderator can be overturned by a majority of those present. And also, if you, anyone were to move to suspend the rules, that would require a two-thirds majority. And I think I've spoken enough about the Moderator's Rules. At this time, I would be, like to entertain a motion to accept the Moderator's Rules as printed in the Town Report. Okay, it sounds like it was moved by Pat Constantino and seconded by Helen Hanks. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Moderator's Rules have been accepted. On most warrant articles, I will call for a voice vote, asking people to vote aye for yes and nay for no. If we need to, and I doubt or in question, I will ask you to have a standing vote, in which case I'll ask you to stand up and hold up your voter cards. Today, however, we are going to have two ballot votes. The first one is required by law, and that is on the issue on Article Number Three on Keno. The second one, which has to do with the SOAR Commission, as part of the Moderator Rules, if anyone wanted to submit a request in writing with at least five names, then that would also require a ballot vote, and I have such a petition that was signed by five people. So we will be voting, doing a ballot vote on both Articles Three and Four. To make it clear, the only time that the ballot box needs to be open for a full hour is when there is a bond issue. With this number of people here, it shouldn't take us that long to get everyone up there to vote. When you do vote, please bring your voter ID card to the table up where the supervisors and the checklist are. They will give you a colored ballot. On the ballot, there will only be the choice of yes or no. Please fold that ballot in half once, carry the ballot over to the other back end near the water coolers. Up there will be one of my Assistant Moderators. You are two-by-state statute, hand that ballot to the Assistant Moderator, who will then place it in the box. Now, that sounds strange, and some people always want to put it in themselves, but once you fold it in half, the Assistant Moderator cannot see your vote and will certainly take care of putting it in the box. If there's anyone here who cannot get to a microphone, we will make sure to get a microphone to you. Without objection, I will dispense with reading the entire warrant at this time, but I will read each article one at a time as we get to them. When we do the ballot votes, I'm going to ask, I know we don't have that many, but I'm going to start with one section, and I'll go to the other section, and if there are any people here who need a little extra time to vote, I'm going to let them go first. Please just know that each person who votes must bring their own ballot to the ballot box. You may not pick up and carry someone else's ballot with you, so that when you get to the ballot box, you have more than one. Let's go to Article Number Three. Article Number Three, shall we allow the operation of Keno games within the town of Tilton? And I'm going to call on Pat Constantino.
Mr. Moderator, I move Article Three to the floor for discussion.
Do we have a second? Seconded by Linda Burns. Pat, would you like to speak?
I can tell you what Keno is all about. Keno is a lottery game, it's a game of chance. It's very similar to Al-Bal Megabucks, it's a ticket. The difference is, the game is played every five minutes. It's played by an establishment that serves liquor, an approved establishment, such as someone that serves liquor, so in Tilton, it would be like Tilton Posse Pizza, I mean it's kettlehead establishments like that. It's a rapid draw game. You pick twenty numbers, one to twelve numbers, twenty numbers are drawn every five minutes. The odds are high that you would win, like any lottery game. Eleven hundred dollars per pupil who go back, the Department of Education, will go back to kindergarten, or approved kindergarten, I should, let me read that exactly, the way it says here. Funding, the Department of Education will calculate distributed grant of eleven hundred per pupil enrolled in approved program to each eligible school district. See SB 191, Section 198, Colon, 48, dash, see for detailed information regarding the process for grants and distribution. So there has been a lot of discussion over this with the Board of Selectmen, and that's why it ended up being a petition warrant article. You know, does it create a lot of avid chaos? Does it bring more such degenerate or gambling into our cities and towns? I personally went out and did my own research, they have it, they voted it in in Laconia. I went to the 405 Grill, I played Keno, I didn't win, but I asked the establishment, did it increase their business? Did it increase their volume of people just come in and gamble and drink? And they said it, it increased it for the first couple of weeks because it was new and they thought it was something to do. It's a machine, it looks like an ATM machine, actually, that you fill out a card, you put your money in, and then you put your card in, and it spits out a ticket. And if you win, you go up to the cashier, and the cashier will give you your money. So it takes time out of the cashier, or the waitress, or the bartender, however they have it established. If you win, the bartenders sometimes get increased tips, and that was the advantage of that. The restaurants do get a percentage of the ticket sales come back, so that's an incentive to them. And also, increase in food sales and drinks, that's also an incentive back to them as well. I went over to Franklin, over to JJ's Woodside Pizza, I asked the same thing, I played the same thing. I didn't win, but I had good time and great pizza. And they didn't really increase the volume of people that came in and played, but it was the same people, and a lot of people did play Keno, but it didn't disturb, didn't have anything different about it, except that when people did win, they took the waitresses and the bartender, and they increased the volume of stay. So instead of staying for, you know, twenty minutes or a half hour for a sandwich and a drink, they stayed an hour for every five minutes for a game, and that was the difference. So that was the input that I plan to feed back to you folks on this. It's a game of lottery, just like the power board and Megabucks. Thank you, everyone. Time's up.
Do we have anyone else who would like to speak on Article Number Three? The Moderator recognizes John Scanlon.
Hi. I was wondering, the Selectmen, that opposed to having Keno this year start. I think it's a good idea to wait another year, perhaps there's some ordinances and that should be in place, so it's properly administrated and allowed in our town. One of the things is, it's not a big winning thing for the establishments, they get eight percent of the sales, but if you're going out for the night, you're fifty dollars to spend. Most of that money goes to the establishment, and it goes to make them make profits, or allow them to make profits, that's about fifty percent of what they spend. That money will now be going to the state for that, which is nice because we think it's helping children, but the way it's set up is, first, all the money, the revenue from the lottery or from the Keno will go to the cost to operate the Keno. If there's anything left, eleven hundred dollars will go for per student out to support for the kindergarten, and if there's not enough to pay that eleven hundred, it comes out of the general fund from the state. So, you know, it's going to be interesting. But I think one of the things that we should look at is sometimes it's nice to have a Keno free zone, that can attract people to. People want to go out with their families and children and have a nice supper without people gambling in front of them. Keno has the lowest odds of winning. It's not something we want to train our kids to do, it's something we want to keep them away from. Keep your hard-earned money and spend what you have. There's no high roller showing up to Tilton to play money. My time's up. Thanks.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak?
Stanley Brown, Caleb Hill Road. I just want to speak to the live free or die motto for New Hampshire, and the ability of our business owners to make these decisions, the overbearing government telling our businesses what they should or shouldn't. I think that should be up to their marketing department, for them to do their research with their customers, and allow them to have the ability to make their choices. That's really all we're talking about, is giving our businesses the opportunity to make the choice for themselves. We're not forcing anybody to do anything, we're just giving them the freedom to make that choice for them, not the government.
Yes.
I just have a question. We have enough problems...
May, may please.
Oh, Harry in Abbott.
Thank you, Mary.
We have enough problems with alcohol and drug addiction, do we need to add gambling to it too, in our town? We have enough problems with alcohol and drug addiction, do we need to add gambling to it too in our town?
Anyone else? One more time. Okay, seeing no one else at the microphone, I'm going to go ahead now and we will go to the vote. Is there anyone in here today that would like a little extra time getting up to the polls? Okay, then what we will do is to start with this side over here to my left, your right, and ask those folks to please go up and get their ballots. Again, fold your ballot in half, put it in the box. Okay, everybody else go ahead, head up.
Hold it down.
I do.
One.
One.
Hold it down, one.
Is there anyone left who has not yet voted? I will leave the polls open for one more minute. Anyone has not yet voted, please do so now.
He was very upset that you did not cook the other day. It's not like here whether or not you cook. I know, he's like, she was there, we couldn't cook it this time. And it's like his last night.
Oh my god. Is he a little...
Last call. Okay, polls are closed for Article Number Three. The assistant moderators will write the ballots down while you're on the stage and count them. And until such time as that tally has been completed, we are now going to move on to Article Number Four. And we can open that up for discussion, as soon as the results have been tallied, I will announce them. To see if the town will vote to discontinue the Tilton Board of Sewer Commissioners and return the authority of RSA 149-1 to the Tilton Board of Selectmen. If this article passes, the Board of Sewer Commissioners will continue for one year until March of 2019. This article was submitted by petition. I'm going to call on Scott Davis.
I'd like to move this article.
And the second is Jane Alden. Scott, you have five minutes, up to five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, Scott Davis. A few years ago, we came from the R.A.T. meeting and it was voted that all the betterments were going to be put on the back of the taxpayers as opposed to property owners who had the sewers connected. And when that was done, it changed the whole premise of the sewer commission. Because now when a project is undertaken, it is going to be paid for by the taxpayers. Here, we're going to know about it at this meeting that we're going to be paying for. When I went to the budget hearing this, and I asked the question, the budget had gone from, their budget, the sewer budget had gone from $462,002.07 to $508,533. I asked, are you raising rates? I asked to the chair of the Budget Committee, which she said, I don't know, because it's a pass through the Budget Committee, you do not vote on this. And there was two sewer commissioners that were in attendance, neither one knew. And then they asked their administrative assistant who said the increase was being taken out of the funds that had been built up within the sewer rents, which is the charges to the people who use the sewer. And they were looking at, they weren't looking at, they were going to do engineering studies on West Bane Street and Clark Road. So when you look at that, that's a forty, forty-six thousand dollars roughly is what they're looking at. And when I went back and looked to see how the sewer funds, a few years back, they had grown to, they had raised our rates forty percent. In 2012, in two accounts that they have, they have, they do not have any funds, they just have two accounts. At the end of the year, they're audited, they were audited at $526,177. The last audit I can get is 2016, they're at $865,248. I don't think it's right that they can take out of the monies that have been paid for by the current sewer users. If we had a perfect system, it'd be one thing, but we don't have a perfect system. I personally feel that that money should be used within the current system, not to try to expand it. I personally also feel since that engineering studies is part of what costs when you have a betterment, that it shouldn't be bored by the users, it shouldn't be bored by the taxpayers. And therefore, when I tried to address, I was looking at trying to how to address this issue. I called D.R.A. and spoke with a supervisor there. And there is no way that I can physically today in our business address this line like I could in any other department in town. So that's why I'm for this, let's make this a town department so that when we come to our meeting, this is a five hundred, almost a half million dollar budget that we can set here in every other budget, every other department, we can go line by line and we can address all of it, we cannot do it the way we are now. Since we've put it on the taxpayers to pay the bill, we should know about this coming before we start doing engineering studies, or before. We do it on everything else, whether it's a P.E. building. And I'm sorry, but I only have so many dollars in my pocket to spend on my taxes. We have a P.E. building, we have the fire district looking at a new firehouse. We have to set our priorities, people, so I ask you to support this, thank you.
Microphone, microphone two.
Hi, I'm Jason Aronin, and I am one of your Tilton Sewer Commissioners and I thank you for voting for me multiple terms. I think I'm on my third or fourth term, so I'm on, I'm into this for about a decade. And in the ten years plus that I've been a sewer commissioner, along with Peter and now Catherine has joined us, I've never seen, never, even Scott Davis or anybody else that signed that petition at a sewer commission meeting to ask these questions because I can give you those answers. So here we are today, I'm going to give you the five-minute version of it. Engineering costs have to be fronted by us until the project is approved, just like we did the Silver Lake project, we had to upload, you know, front-load that money and then it gets refunded through grant and loan payment. Yes, the loan portion is repaid from betterments, but we get a pretty hefty grant and we exhaust that grant to the penny. So yeah, okay, so maybe we have to, you know, throw forty, fifty thousand dollars in to get the ball rolling, but then that gets rebated out to us, so that's step one. Our budget is paid for by sewer fees. And I will tell you again, after multiple elected terms as a sewer commissioner, we did a rate increase, not a, your bill did not go up forty percent. We did a forty percent increase on the per cubic foot charge. Now many of you live in a household that hits a minimum and you don't go into the bracket of paying over and above the per cubic foot charge. So maybe your bill was fifty-seven dollars, might have gone to fifty-nine dollars, so forth. So we made a rate adjustment, which hadn't been done in my entire tenure as a sewer commissioner. Sure, if Peter was asked, he'd tell you that it's been an awful long time even before that when we made a minor adjustment, I think, two to two and a half cents or something in the fractions of a penny increase, which, oh my gosh, it's forty percent? Okay, fine, I'll just get back in line. So I'll tell you, there's some numbers, but come to a sewer commission meeting, they're pretty boring, they're poorly attended, I can tell you that. Nobody that's signed this petition or is involved in that is asking those questions of us and I'm ready to provide any answers that anybody might have.
Hello, my name is Richard Olson III, I'm in Department of Homeland Security. I'm in support of keeping the sewer commission just because I don't want consolidated government. It's likely to have a huge plate, it's very full, I don't think adding more to that plate is going to help us. I was actually surprised when I moved here, I was low the sewer bill was coming from D.A.R. And D.A.R. was very expensive compared to what I'm paying now, I never have exceeded the minimum and I'm really happy with the service mission. That's all I have to say.
Scott, before you speak, I want to see if there's anyone else here that would like to, anyone else want to make a comment?
I'm also one of your sewer commissioners. I just want to point out two things. 149-9 is very specific, that's a law that governs sewer, well, that tells the governing body with the sewer commissioners what they can and cannot do. The sewer mission funds have to be in a sewer fund, they can't come mingle with the general fund and it's very specific what the monies can be used for, engineering is one of them. The other thing, if you vote to eliminate the sewer commissioners or the sewer commission, you're depriving yourself of being able to choose that governing body separately from the selectmen. And Jason's right, I've been a sewer commissioner for one term, starting a second term and no one comes to the meetings to ask. The budget for the sewer commissioners is not really a pass-through budget. Any resident has the right to ask, it's all in a way, what goes on, how the monies are spent. The budget is audited and the monies are under the hands of the treasurer, just like the general fund monies with the selectmen. Thank you.
Microphone two.
U.C. Trials Down, Caleb Hill, if you need to know that. I'm a little bit uncomfortable giving back to the selectmen moments, but this is one more thing that, like you said Catherine, we, the voters have some control over. If we are really interested, then we can go, go to the meetings and become involved that way. But if we give this back to the selectmen, then they are hiring the people that are in charge of that and I feel... charge of that, and I feel like if it's working, and the rates are low, and no one's having any problems, then why change it?
At this time, I will announce the results of Article Three. Those who voted yes in the affirmative were 40, those who voted in the negative 27, so Article Three passes, and I so declare. Going back to Article Four. Anyone else wish to speak before I call the question on this and we send you to vote? Scott, would you like to speak again?
Yes, I would. What happens if you take our funds, and you do engineering studies, and then when we come to the vote, you need a two-thirds window, not a, not a simple majority, you need a two-thirds to get lording. You do not get lording, how do the users that have been paying into the system get their money back? That's one question. The other one is, when, if we can get this through, then we're going to have line items, just like we have in every other department in the town. When we come to our business meeting, this is the only time as a citizen that I can make a motion. I know it all means I want to sit there and ask the commissioners to do something. They don't have to do anything. But if we come to town meeting, and we zero out or adjust any line, then they have to stay with that line. That's the difference. Right now, it's just one line, if you look in your, in your, in your town report, you're going to see one line for the sewer underneath the town. You look at every other department, and it's line by line by line, and that's where it gives the legislative body, the people, the power to look and address those lines. Thank you.
Hi, Jason Wright again. Start the clock again for five minutes, and I will tell you, our budget is broken up with several lines and very transparent, and in many cases, we try to remain as level funded as we can. We have one employee, we don't own any trucks, we don't own any equipment, we subcontract work where we need it, and we keep money in the bank, because when stuff breaks, you want us to fix it. If you want to move our money around, or, you know, deplete our accounts, and put it back in the general fund, if you think you can, and then you have something that breaks, that's a problem. Scott said our financial system is broken. We have an aging sewer system in downtown and other parts of Tilton. You look at our entire southern border of Tilton, it is water. We consider ourselves the gateway to the lakes region, and want to draw on tourism, swimming, and boating, and fishing. Take a look at our entire southern border. We have properties, a budding, the Winnipeg River, and our lakes that are still not on pipe. And if you think that you've got the best septic system in the world, that it goes into a tank, and everything's okay, and it gets pumped out, no. Your effluence is still reaching into the ground, and is making its way somehow, somewhere into the rivers and waters. So, our goal is to get clean water for everybody, and continue with our tourism and everything that makes Tilton great. And I'll tell you, I've been, I've been, it's a long fought battle, I've been at this a decade to try to get pipe finished on West Bane, among other projects in town. It's not an easy process, yes, the town has lording authority, so we still got to come and ask for the lond, at $40,000 over the course of a long period of time. I don't think we can break that up and write little checks to all the sewer users, but again, we've had lording rates in a decade, and it put us at the bottom of the pack as far as sewer rates goes. We are physically conservative and responsible to our users and our customers. Again, come to the meeting and ask questions.
Okay, the moderator recognized, it's Peter Fogg.
Kathy, can you put a high slide on the rates, please? I'm Peter Fogg, I'm the Turd Sewer Commissioner, I've been on since 1996. I believe since then, we've had two rate increases. Give them a second, and we'll see. Currently, if you're in Tilton, if you're outside of the water district and you do not have a meter on your well, we have a flat fee, it's $80 per quarter. If you're on a meter, it's three and a half, $3.50 per 100 cubic feet. If you use 1,000 cubic feet or less a year, which is about 8,000 per quarter, which is about 8,000 gallons per quarter, it's a minimum charge of $35. We do not have any other administrative fees like Laconia and Guilford do. As you look at the other towns that have metered rates, ours is substantially lower. Since 1996, the only complaints I received as a sewer commissioner, many of you would recall the Silver Lake Road project, and sewer project, while that was going on, we had a resident that about last month would write a letter to the editors claiming that the sewer commission was a million dollars over budget for the project. When all was said and done, the project ended out, we paid the full blown amount, not a penny more. If the selectmen take it over, it's going to be interesting work for them. I have spent many a night at odd hours at a pump station with either AAA pump, Rovels, been out in the middle of Winter Street with Kenny Partridge, 10 o'clock to midnight at night to fix a broken line. I've spent holidays, I missed holiday parties because we had a pump station go down, and we were shuttling between pump stations to keep stuff going. If we throw this back to the board of selectmen, I know our public works do not have the capability to do sewer work, that's different than doing ditches and culverts, not to mention, even if they could do it, I don't think they could do the production rate that we get from the contractors. As was stated earlier, we have one employee, we contract everything else, everything else out. It's worked great for over 20 years, I don't see why we need to change it. Thank you.
Do we have anyone else who would like to speak on Article Four? Seeing no one, I will call the question. And at this point, we're going to start with folks sitting on this side over here. Please take your voter cards up, get in punch, pick up your ballots. I'll have our assistant moderator with a ballot box. Again, if you vote yes, you are voting to give the authority of the sewer commission to the select board beginning in 2019. If you vote no, you are voting to leave the sewer commission intact. Is there anyone else left in the house who would like to vote? I'm going to leave the polls open for one more minute, then I'm going to close them. Okay, seeing none, I am closing the polls. If my assistant moderator is pleased, if he allows, bring him down front, I appreciate it. While they are doing that, we will move on to Article Five. Article Five, to see if the town will vote to reduce the number of elected budget committee members at large, RSA 32:15, from six members at large to five members at large. This only requires a majority vote. I'm going to call on John Scanlon.
I'm over Article Five to four.
And Pat Constantino. Pat Constantino to second. John, would you like to speak to this, please?
Yes, I think we look at the budget committee, and you see the same faces, and we have a hard time getting people to be on the budget committee. And we want to move it down to five people to easier fill, so that we can, on a form, actually do the budget. There have been times when we couldn't get enough people to come in, and create a form, but this would do that.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak to Article Five? The chair will recognize Joyce, who is not a resident, but certainly a town employee, and without objection, we will let her speak. Okay, Joyce?
Another reason we're doing this is, last year, we found out that we weren't following the municipal budget act law, that we are required to have a representative from the Lockmere Water District. And so, by adding that person, we ended up with an even number of eight people, because selectmen are appointed, the Lockmere Village will be appointed, and so by changing the members at large to five, we'll have an odd number for voting. That was another reason. Or you could go to nine. But, one of you guys kept in, sign up.
Moderator recognized, microphone, two.
Hi, Jason Wright again. Glad to see that we're still going to have a budget committee, and to make a small adjustment in light of volunteerism being down overall. I'm speaking for it. Some of you might be aware that they're trying to disband the fire, totally separate, but Fire District Budget Committee, that there was a movement out to disband that, due to the same reason, the lack of volunteerism. I sat on that committee, so somebody's got an information on sewer and budgets, but I think this is great that we still have this transparency, this extra layer of having a budget committee, and I think budget committees report, so let's, let's keep it alive and make the adjustment.
Anyone else like to speak for or against Article Five? Seeing no one coming to the microphones, I'm going to go ahead and we'll call the question on this. Article Number Five, to see if the town will vote to reduce the number of elected budget committee members at large, according to RSA 32:15, from six members at large to five members at large. All those in favor of passing Article Five say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Article Five passes with a unanimous vote. Article Number Six. To see if the town will vote to ratify an easement on town-owned property located off School Street, map number, lot number U7-41A, approximately 2.9 acres, which shall remain as a recreational and wildlife corridor, and shall never be sold or conveyed to another party or person, and shall never be developed or have any structures placed upon it. The governing body or its designees shall maintain the property. I'm going to call on John Scanlon.
I'm over Article Six to four for discussion, and I'd like to ask Joyce forward to explain this.
Ah, wait, Jen, we need to get a second first. Wait, Jeff, we need to get a second first. Seconded by Pat Constantino. Okay, we would like to ask Joyce.
Yes, Joyce.
Back in 1994, the town meeting took a piece of property by tax deed, located off School Street. It's roughly, I don't know, acres, it's 2.9 acres. And the wording in the motion was to use it for park purposes. And so the lot's vacant. And at last year's town meeting, and I thought maybe this is where you could jump in, what happened at last year's town meeting? Turn it into a wildlife corridor and come back to the town.
I think the same faces occur here, so we all remember last year's meeting. But we want to turn it into a wildlife corridor, which will be nice because it connects to Buffalo Park and gives nice little parcel there, and it's currently used as a wildlife corridor. So it's a little bit different than the uses originally, as Joyce mentioned, for recreation. At that point, we were looking at possibly swapping out some property, back when we got that piece of property, in exchange for having the pond and other possibilities. The way things have unfolded and what we agreed on at last meeting, this will ratify that and correct it.
Before I call on the next speaker, if you look at the map, the property is right between the Tilton School Pond, and then it goes all the way out behind the athletic fields, and then up into this area. And this is the area right in here, which, and if you've gone by already, you've seen a sign. The Select Board already earlier this year did approve, and we're just asking you folks to kind of double stamp that. Kathleen?
Kathy Mitchell. Last year, Mr. Wakefield made an amendment asking for this body to designate this as a conservation area and a wildlife area. And at the time, his motion was withdrawn because the Select Board and the Conservation Commission said, "Oh, we'll take care of it." Which we did, during the course of the year, we went through all the different things that one has to do to designate it as a legal... As a legal area. And this is to protect this land, it's mostly wet, they talk about 2.9 acres. It's primarily wet, and it also has some steep slopes which don't make it possible to build on it, which is why nobody ever built on it. And it is a wildlife corridor, is another resident on School Street who has spoken to the Conservation Commission about keeping this area open. She watches birds for cars that are in that area, watches the animals. So this is a true conservation area, it's a wildlife corridor, it connects to Buffalo Park, and it's just next to Riser.
Microphone two.
Yes, Mr. Marry, what kind of maintenance would be done? Because it says that the board, their designate would maintain. I've lived in the neighborhood since 95, and there's been nothing done on that piece of land, and I'm just wondering what type of maintenance are you talking about? Are you talking about mowing it like across from the police station?
There really would be very little maintenance.
Excuse me, Karen Dawson.
There'd be very little maintenance because it is a wildlife corridor, so you wanna keep it as natural as possible. I can imagine if a large tree fell down, that went to a flooding property or neighbor's yard, it would have to be removed. But the trails in there are made by the wildlife, so it would be really a naturalized area.
So we're not gonna mow it though, per se?
No.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, let's go to the vote. I'll read the article again, to see if the town will vote to ratify an easement on town-owned property located off School Street. Map is lot number RU7, lot 41A, approximately 2.9 acres, which shall remain as recreational and a wildlife corridor. It shall never be sold or conveyed to another party or person, and shall never be developed or have any structures placed upon it. The governing body or its designate shall maintain the property. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The article passes unanimously. Article Number Seven. I'm sorry. The results on the SOR Commission vote is 52 no, 17 yes. Article Number Four failed, and I so declare it. Article Number Seven. To see if the town will vote to accept the Board of Selectmen's report of the Police Building Study Committee. And I'm gonna call on Pat Constantino.
Mr. Marry, I move Article Seven to the floor for discussion. Seconded by Asher.
Seconded by Jason Wright.
All right, Jason Wright.
Pat, do you wanna speak to it first?
Yes, please. At this time, Mr. Moderator, I'd like to introduce our Police Building Study Committee. Those that are here, present, can you please stand? We have Enid Dane, Jason Wright, Eric Pyer, our current Vice Chair, Chuck Root. Those that are not present is Kevin LaChapelle, our Chair, and Tom Day, and myself as ex officio. And this time, Mr. Moderator, I'd like to defer the report, the presentation to our Vice Chair, Eric Pyer.
Certainly. Just give your name.
Hi, my name is Eric Pyer, I live on Cedar Street. I am the Vice Chair of the Police Building Study Committee. We were, we had together in 2017, after being contacted by the Board of Selectmen to serve on the committee. At that time, we had a couple pieces of land that we started to look at on Special Park Drive. And as we got into the process and started digging below the surface a little bit, we realized that those two pieces of property were not gonna be easel for building, that the reconstruction cost became too high. And unanimously, it became very clear to us that that's not where we wanted to be. So after a few meetings, we went back to the drawing board, so to speak, and we looked at the entire town until... One of our members went out one day, drove the entire Lincoln Town, made note of all large parcels of land, that would be our requirements for the police station. We started out with a list of 77 or 78 parcel of land. We narrowed that down to seven parcel of land, which we have narrowed down to three parcel of land, in which we are in current negotiations with the Land Office to try to find out which one would be the best for the taxpayers, and for the town and for the police department. So we are doing that, we are trying to be as transparent with taxpayers as possible. We are providing people for our next meeting. We have a meeting on April 9th, that's gonna be more of an update, so that will mostly be non-public, which unfortunately became heavy there, and at the time, we didn't have to leave. Then on April 23rd, we'll have another hearing, all the form, so if you'd like to have, give us any input on the police station, we'll greatly appreciate that. We've also started a Facebook page, it's about, you can look for it, it's called the Tilton Building Police Study Committee. And you can look it up on Facebook, and we will update people through that and also through the town website. But it's a way for us to be able to update a little bit quicker for people through Facebook. It's a place where people get a lot of their...
Thank you, anyone have any questions? Okay, seeing none, I'm gonna repeat the article, it's just asking you folks to accept the report. Article Seven, to see if the town will vote to accept the Board of Selectmen's report of the Police Building Study Committee. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion, Article Number Seven passes and is unanimous. Article Number Eight. To see if the town is in favor of adopting community revitalization tax relief incentives in accordance with the provisions of RSA 79-E. And for the purposes of making the motion, I'm calling on Christine Debitsky.
I'd like to move Article Eight to the floor for discussion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Seconded by...
Heather Bishop Duncan.
Heather Bishop Duncan, thank you. D-U-M-K-A.
Correct.
Okay, Christine, you now have five minutes, up to five minutes.
Mr. Moderator, I defer to Joyce.
She has deferred her time to Joyce, without objection.
Aye on Helen here. We have a wonderful planning board, they, and we're sad to see that we, it was Budget Committee, I'm sorry. Our planning board, and they've really taken an interest in doing some community development. And one of the things they had expressed interest in is trying to revitalize our downtown. Because it really is, our downtown is an asset, the town of Tilton is the center of our community. And ever since the Main Street program went away, it's just things that kind of... Because at one point, when I first came into town, I think every storefront was full. We're down to what, three, we have three vape places, a number of candy salons, and... So we're trying to think of ways to get interested in looking at the downtown. So there are a couple statutes that are available, and what is popular with a number of communities, a number of communities in New Hampshire have adopted this, but it really hasn't taken off yet, except in towns where they really have like mill buildings and things to develop. But what it is, it's a tax relief incentive to have someone come in, you know, reinvest in your community. They have to do a minimum of 15% of the current assessed value in rehabilitation costs. And the other kicker is that they have to provide a public benefit. So what, there's a whole process when they apply, there's an explanation in the town report on basically how it works. But just to give you an example, I mean, this would be my wish, if I were to win the lottery, this is what I would do. Okay, so this is an example, is that someone would come in and purchase the former San Bonnie building, and they wanna develop it into affordable one-bedroom senior living apartments overlooking the river. It would be handicapped accessible with an elevator, and underneath on the ground floor would be some parking. And they would retain as much of the Victorian old village architecture as possible. That by bringing, letting our elderly continue to live in our community, be close to services, you know, churches, restaurants, and hopefully the other stores would fill up to provide services for people that are living downtown. So the public benefit would be that you would have an energy-efficient building, it would be handicapped accessible for housing, and would keep our elders living in town. And so in exchange for doing all that, they would, on the increased value that they would be assessed for making those improvements, they would not be paying any taxes on that increased value for a maximum of five, you decide to go five years, you don't have to go five years, it all depends on what the project is. So, you know, something may not happen, but it's nice to know we have a tool in our toolkit. If we could encourage some people to come in and revitalize downtown, set up businesses, employ people, economic vitality is another of the public benefit. So we've got a planning board that's anxious to go forward.
Does that mean anyone else wish to speak for or against? Microphone two.
Mr. Moderator, who would make the determination whether they qualify for publichood?
Their eligibility is clearly outlined on the statutes, but they would make their application to the Board of Selectmen. The Board of Selectmen would go through a process to make sure that they were eligible. And then they would present, there's a very active community process, community involvement process, and they would have public hearings to make sure that the town's people were in agreement that yes, there was a number for public benefit.
Microphone two.
Hi, my name's Microphone Two, and it's Jason Wright, by the way, I'm gonna be the next. My question is, does the RSA define the district, and or does each town get to define what that district is? It just seems, it seems like sort of a good idea, but if there are other investors and other property owners that wanna develop a building at the other end of Lockmere District, I mean, we've got other buildings in Tilton that are falling down, they're in need of repair, in need of revitalization. Because, you know, we've got some very nice historical buildings, so if somebody wanted to convert that into an assisted living or some other benefit to the town, they don't get to reap the benefit, it would appear, so correct me if I'm wrong, if we're not playing in that little footprint, and Tilton's a lot bigger than that, those other investors would be discouraged from investing in developing the other fallen down buildings in town, right?
Right, one of the other requirements of the grant is it has to be in accordance with your master plan. And our master plan does put emphasis on the downtown district, which we roughly define it as from train track to train track, but we also go a little bit beyond the train track because of...
Mr. Moderator, please.
Could I defer for a second?
Yes. Catherine Dawson.
The village district has a defined boundary in our zoning maps.
But in answer to your question, at any point in the future, the Selectmen could come back and expand the district. It could expand it to certain buildings, but right now, because we do have a defined village district according to zoning ordinance, that's why we put forth the downtown district this year. But yes, it could in the future be expanded to other parts of town.
Scott Davis, would St. Mary's Community Assembly Church, while the Village Center, fall into that area? You're talking village district?
I'd have to look at a zoning map to tell you. Is it close? Yeah. And it's, yeah, because it's a mixed-use district.
It's a village district, is Catherine, is Mr. Moderator, are they saying that it's the village district that we're talking about here? Is that what we're talking about, as far as the area?
Yeah, our downtown district, which is a mixed-use district, because it incorporates businesses and housing.
So it would be included?
Yeah. Yeah, I would say yes.
Okay, thank you.
Phil Boster, 33 Glower. You mentioned the town master plan. As I recall, that was only in effect or good for about five years, has that ever been revised? Supposed to be updated every five years, it just seemed like that that kind of falls by the wayside and then it gets done. In which case, how could you use that as a guideline?
So Catherine?
We have a master plan in effect, it hasn't been replaced until 1980. That doesn't go away. The planning board has had several sessions to revise that master plan. It hasn't gone through the public hearing process, officially been... It hasn't gone through the public hearing process, officially been adopted, the revision. But and because that hasn't taken place, the existing master plan would be until nineteen
Do we have any other questions? Come right up before the microphone, please.
Delton Tilton. Page twenty-nine is our cheat sheet on the community revitalization tax incentive, and the second to the last paragraph in bold specifically says, only if the building is located in the downtown district, doesn't say village district, it says only if it's
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, I will go ahead and read the article. To see if the town is in favor of adopting community revitalization tax relief incentives in accordance with the provisions of RSA seventy-nine-E. All those in favor of Article eight, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay.
Nay.
I rule that it has passed. Article eight has passed. Article nine, to see if the town will vote to raise an appropriate sum of thirty-five thousand dollars to be added to the Highway Capital Reserve Fund previously established. This is not included in the operating budget, and you can see that it's recommended by the Select Board and the Budget Committee. And I'm going to call on Peter Fogg.
Mr. Moderator, I'd like to move Article nine to the floor for discussion.
Do we have a second? Seconded, Richard Olson. Thank you. Peter, would you like to speak to this?
Article nine is one of our regular warrant articles. What we're doing is taking some money that was not spent in last year's budget and putting it into an account for Highway Equipment Capital Reserve. That will fund, like the Public Works fleet. Currently, last year, we bought a plow truck, a Ford F-550, Kawasaki loader, Yanmar excavator, a Hudson trailer duff, Harlan. That totaled, pretty much depleted the account, although currently, the Ford F-550 has not been totally outfitted, it's waiting on about forty-five thousand dollars' worth of equipment, it's down in Concord awaiting work. So currently, if we add the thirty-five thousand dollars, today's meeting, our balance would go up to eighty thousand, five thirty-eight. However, once we pay off the F-550, it'd bring the total back down to about thirty-five thousand. Fortunately, Public Works is going to be set for a short few years before I think we need any major replacements. What'll probably come next would be a pickup, which is going to be a lot cheaper than some of the bigger trucks. So this is just a regular article, we're trying to keep a fund going so that when we need equipment, it doesn't affect the tax rate. Thank you.
Anyone? Kate? Scott?
Mr. Moderator, Scott Davis. If correctly but wrong, Selectmen, we bought a truck last year in Hibler, March, and we still don't have it?
Yep, correct.
The response by Peter said, yes, that is correct, we do not have that yet.
Well, I hope we wouldn't be buying equipment from that company anymore, because we've gone through the whole, this is a plow truck, my understanding, right? And we've gone through the whole winter-down one plow truck, is that correct? Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, we're going to vote Article nine, to see if the town will vote to raise an appropriate sum of thirty-five thousand dollars to be added to the Highway Equipment Capital Reserve Fund previously established. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Article number nine passes unanimously. Article number ten, to see if the town will vote to raise an appropriate sum of seventy-four thousand dollars to be added to the Town Roads, Bridges, and Sidewalks Capital Reserve Fund previously established. This appropriation is not included in the operating budget. This article is recommended by both the Selectmen and the Budget Committee. I'm going to call on Peter Fogg.
Mr. Moderator, I'd like to move Article ten to the floor for discussion, please.
Do we have a second? Seconded by Richard Olson again.
This is another one dealing with Public Works, this is adding to the Roads, Bridges, Sidewalk Capital Reserve Fund. I believe last year, we started the year out at two-hundred-sixty-five thousand seventeen dollars, projects that we had done last year. We did sidewalks around the Town Hall on Main Street, and then going up School Street to the Railroad Bridge, that was about thirty-seven thousand nine hundred forty-eight dollars. We put the wear and service on Ridge Road, that was twenty thousand eight hundred forty-one dollars. We did some work on Class Five Road, the old Route Three, down by the Wintersquaw Market. That total, two little projects, would be about nine thousand. We spent sixty-seven thousand nine hundred fifty-eight dollars out of the account last year, bringing the balance down to a hundred ninety-seven thousand fifty-nine dollars. We're asking today to add another seventy-four thousand to bring the total back up to two-hundred-seventy-one thousand and fifty-nine dollars. This will cover your paving projects that we decide to do, whether they're roads, bridges,
Can we get a?
Scott Davis?
Can we get an update of what we plan on doing this year with this money? I know what we've done last year, but do we have a list of what we're going to do this year?
Peter?
Yeah, we do. Barack, would you like to answer it for me? I'm going to defer to the Public Works Director.
First of all, thank you for coming, I would make some time out of your day. I do have some things in the works for this year, and I, what I would like to start doing is putting in place a pavement preservation program to save the actual pavement that we do have that's still good. But there's several treatments out there that we can put on the roads to maintain what we do have, and start working, start putting the work, you guys' tax dollars, on the stuff that is in very poor condition. And we might run around, some of this stuff is a little more expensive than others, Highland Avenue, Linden Avenue, and Wintersquaw Market are looking like the big projects that I'm going to have the money for and try to get done this year. They're in very, very poor shape, and as opposed to the other roads around, with the exception of some of the state roads. Those are the roads that I've found that need the most help right now, so that's where I'm going to focus my time and some sidewalks. Thank you.
Dane? Eric? Go right ahead. Thank you. A few years ago, when I started the Budget Committee, there used to be a plan that the previous public works director had, an action plan. Is that plan still being followed? On when certain roads are going to be paved in town?
Call on Peter Fogg.
Yeah, it's, we do have a ten-year plan, it's sort of a works in progress, so, sort of like the state's ten-year plan, just because you're in a certain spot, if something happens, it may get changed based on conditions and all, but there is a plan that the Public Works Director has been working on amending.
I have a follow-up question. Yes, Eric, go right ahead, thank you. In last year, you mentioned Ridge Road having a top coat paving, the paving around Town Hall and the sidewalks. Wasn't that from the two-thousand-sixteen budget, not the two-thousand-seventeen budget? I remember in two-thousand sixteen, listening to the Selectmen's meeting, that the wear coat, or the top coat of Ridge Road, for instance, was going to be applied in the spring to come. I think this year, from last year, but the Town Hall project was added in two-thousand sixteen, that's what I thought.
Peter?
Ridge Road was originally supposed to have been done the previous year, the work was done in the fall. We decided at that time to go in, get the ditching done, do the base course, let it set the winter, that way, any sinking or compaction issues, you can then shim out and cover with the wearing course, which is what happened. So it was originally scheduled the previous year, finish the next. Personally, I prefer projects that way, because you can then get the road in a smoother condition, because you give the base course of winter to set up. What was the second part again?
The paving around Town Hall.
Those, that project was last year, was totally last year, because we had been getting.
I thought we put funds into that account in two-thousand sixteen for that project.
We put funds in for years, and we got hammered because nothing was being done, and last year was like the first year we finally got moving and got some sidewalks done.
Thank you. Microphone two.
Evan Kate. What happens to the seventy-four thousand dollars if we're going to put it into the capital reserve fund?
Who can answer this?
It stays in the account until we have the project, and it builds until we decide on the project that's being completed. And then it's only being used for bridges, sidewalks, and roads, that's it. And then next year, if the road that we want to have completed is a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, we wait until we have a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and then again, and then we do the road that we need to. Out of what the sidewalks that we did last year was also included in some of that grant money that, the gas tax money that we got from the state, we were a lot, we did a lot more sidewalk than anticipated last year in the project. It was like fifty-four thousand dollars that we got that were added to the sidewalk project, and we were able to go all the way up to the railroad, railroad track by companies.
Where's the seventy-four thousand coming from?
We buy taxation, and then it goes into the account, and then next year, we'll put in more money. Every year, we put in money for the roads.
Okay, so you're asking these taxpayers to invest seventy-four thousand dollars of our money, do you? And I didn't hear any kind of an exact answer from the Public Works Director, what was going to be done with that money? I heard was, oh, might do this, or might do that.
Well, you said Highland, Highland Road, Linden Avenue.
Man, please finish.
Yeah, I don't want to get into a debate here. Make your point, and then we'll try to get you an answer, okay?
My point is that I would like to hear exactly what is going to be done with that seventy-four thousand dollars, and what the budget is for road, bridge, sidewalk repairs from somewhere.
John?
I guess the best way to explain it is, we know we're going to fix roads every single year. Some years, some roads come up and need more of a cost, other years, less of a cost. So instead of every year, coming out and saying at this time of year, we're going to fix X, Y, and Z roads, it's going to cost this amount, we've averaged it, and we put the money aside so that we can do that. The ten-year plan is great, and when roads go back into succession on the ten-year plan, but sometimes, when you hit year eight or nine, you say, hey, this road's lasting a little longer than the one that's going to be, you know, ten more years from now, so, you know, you have to be a little flexible on it. And so like with the heating bill that you would balance pay over twelve months, as opposed to paying all of it during January, February, March. Hope that answers.
Microphone two.
Hi, Jason Wright, and my neighbor's point is well-taken, but I think the thing that we should probably all understand is something like this is a moving target, and it's very difficult. You could go out and get a quote in September, you know, go out last fall, drive everything, get bids, and get quotations, and bring it to town meeting, and then when you go into the project, the price of asphalt's changed, the price of fuel has changed, there's more potholes than there were, the damage is worse, winter took a toll, and you, it's very difficult to try to even build it a contingency on that. Again, with sewer, once you dig up a pipe, you realize, gee, it's not broken here, it's another hundred feet in each direction, it is, it's a very difficult thing to bring those numbers here, and I'm sure they would love that transparency, but you can't get a quote, have it at town meeting, and then go out and do the project, expect that it's in this kind of venue. You need to build these fund balances in small steps like this, rather than surprise you and say, oh, we get this bill for three hundred thousand because we fixed all these roads for it. I'd rather see it in small chunks like this.
Microphone two.
Mr. Moderator, I think some point of clarification. What this account does, by building it up, it gives the flexibility to both the highway and the governing body, during the course of the year, if they have a project, they have the funds to go ahead and do that. Because I believe that the Select Board are the agents to this fund, correct? And so you have, they have the ability to take out of this fund during the course of the year without a vote anymore from the legislative body. So this is just a, it's a way of putting money into a savings account so that they can address the issues on the roads and the highways and the bridges and the sidewalks. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, let's vote. Article ten, to see if the town will vote to raise an appropriate sum of seventy-four thousand dollars to be added to the Town Roads, Bridges, Sidewalks Capital Reserve Fund previously established. This appropriation is not included in the operating budget. All those in favor of Article ten, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Okay, Article ten passes, I so declare. Article eleven, to see if the town will vote to raise an appropriate sum of twenty thousand dollars to be added to the Capital Reserve Fund previously established. This again has not been included in the operating budget. Article eleven.
Mr. Moderator, I move Article eleven to the floor for discussion.
Do we have a second? Seconded by Jane Alden, moved by Pat Constantino. Pat, would you like to speak to this?
Yes, every year, we put twenty thousand dollars aside in a reserve fund in order not to have just one big bill at the end of the year. Two thousand nineteen is our reevaluation year. This is the fourth year, at the end of the year, at the end of the fourth year, it's about ninety thousand, so I guess that's it. This is fourth year, twenty thousand, by the end of the year, it's ninety thousand in two thousand nineteen, which is the reevaluation.
Microphone two.
Mr. Moderator, Scott Davis, I think something that is always missing with this, and I bring it up all the time, is that it's so important, where we're in the school district and the fire district with Northfield, that somehow we have to get on the same calendar schedule. Because if you look in the book and you see the percentage of equalized valuation at Northfield as compared to Tilton, right now, we're at a thirteen percent disadvantage with Northfield. And when you're, when you're at a higher rate, because you go one side or the other, either ten percent below, a hundred, or ten percent above, that it's very important that we get on the same calendar year, and somehow we're going to have to be able to figure that out. I know you've tried it in the past, but somehow we're going to have to figure that out, because that's important when we look at our school funding, which is twenty-six million dollar budget. It plays a huge role in our taxes, and so does the fire district, because we paid the lion's share of the fire district based on equalized valuation. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments about Article eleven? Seeing none, Article eleven, to see if the town will vote to raise an appropriate sum of twenty thousand dollars to be added to the reevaluation Capital Reserve Fund previously established. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Article eleven passes unanimously. To see if the town will vote to raise an appropriate sum of two thousand dollars to the Lake Improvement slash Maintenance Capital Reserve Fund previously established. This appropriation is not included in the operating budget, but is recommended by both the Select Board and Budget Committee. I'm calling on John Scannell.
Okay, so I move Article twelve to the floor.
Do we have a second? Seconded by Wayne Brock. Okay, John?
Every year, we've been putting some.
Every year, we've been putting some money aside to reserve the lakes out. Primarily, we have a problem with mill foil in lakes, all of the lakes in New Hampshire's rivers and waterways. Well, the Conservation Commission, except people where they apply for use of this money to control the mill foil. We've had some successes in the past. We've had kind of a neglect to do it for a while, and it's getting out of hand. The lakes created a, I guess, association, combining everybody together to try and work together to control the weeds. And they have come to us and asked for some money this year to control what Winasquaw along the shore. So it is working. We're hoping that we can get some money spent to control Silver Lake. If any of you are from Silver Lake and have ever gone out there and seen the amount of weeds that are in there, it's out of control. And with the mill foil, every time it gets cut by a bolt of rock or something like that, it turns into a plant, a piece. So we're hoping that we'll continue to fund that. And this year, it's for $2,000. Previous year, it was $3,000.
Yes, microphone two.
Hi, Jason Wright. John, do you happen to have an idea of what we receive from the state? When you register a vote, you pay a surcharge into the mill foil fund. Do we get any of that, or do we receive a benefit of that into our lakes?
I'm going to call on Kathy Mitchell.
Kathy Mitchell.
Microphone.
In answer to that question, I think we should listen to Mr. Mead, who's part of the Winasquaw Watershed Network, which was established two years ago, last summer, but they've been meeting for two years. And they're looking at a coordinated effort on the five towns that are around Winasquaw and Buena Vasque. And they have in fact received a grant from New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services. It was in the paper yesterday, the Echo. And they will be getting some money, but it's not going to be to cover the entire process. And it's not a process that happens once. We found that out several years ago. We had given some money to the Conservation Commission, and it was a great project, but then nothing happened for three years. And the mill foil doesn't go away till the end. So I'd like to let Mr. Mead explain.
Yes, microphone two.
My name is Tom B., and I'm a Tilt resident and also a member of the Winasquaw Watershed Network, which was formed officially last summer for the purpose of coordinating programs to preserve the quality of Winasquaw, an important resource for the town. And I think what Kathy just mentioned in terms of the mill foil abatement as being on-again, off-again kind of program. The intent of the Winasquaw Watershed Network is to make sure that this kind of program is, gets the attention of both the towns and the state on a more continuing basis. So one of our successes so far is to initiate a current program of mill foil abatement talking to all five towns that border on Lake Winasquaw and the Department of Environmental Services, which has granted for this program an amount of money mentioned in the papers. Anyway, as an important resource for the town, we think it's important to, for all five towns to contribute to that abatement. Otherwise, the mill foil is a very aggressive detriment to the lakes, both Lake Winasquaw and all of the downstream water bodies.
Thank you. Mr. Mead, before you go away, Catherine Dawson has a question. Catherine?
Is Silver Lake included in this program? Because right now, we're pretty close to losing it to mill foil and aquatic basis.
From the standpoint of the Winasquaw Watershed Organization, it's not officially a body of water that that organization is addressing. On the other hand, anything that is done in Lake Winasquaw has a positive effect on any of the downstream water bodies. So to the extent that it can be abated in Winasquaw, it's going to be that much less pressure.
I also can have a response from Catherine too. As chair of the Conservation Commission, people from Silver Lake in the past have come to the Conservation Commission for resources. A few years ago, they were upset by pontoon boat go through the lake, suck up, try to remove all the mill foil. And when some funds were provided for them, that project kind of fell apart. So the concept of having monies in this fund would be to also provide assistance down the road to Silver Lake should the right project and people come along asking for it. That's what the money is there for. Yes, sir?
Hello, my name is Rich Wilson again. I live on Silver Lake, and I can tell you that you can't even try to jet ski from one side to the other without having to stop and unclotting from the mill foil. Cannot see ground 90% of the lake, and it is just a terrible lake. And you can tell it was a really nice lake at one point. And I would really like to see it come back and get some of the mill foil gone, because it's getting to the point where you can't even run an outdoor motor over it, because your outdoor will get clawed. And I really think that all the attention is felt on the bigger lakes. Meanwhile, every time they do something, it's a little action we forgot about, and I think it's funny. Thank you.
Microphone two.
Hi, Jason Wright. And John, for a question, or to whoever can answer it. What's in the fund now? Is $2,000 enough to hit it hard?
John?
Presently, there's, I believe it's $9,180, $9,214. Yes. And just to reiterate, this is the fund for all the lakes, all of the waterways, the river and everything in Tilt, and the waterways of where responsible for. It's great to have community, and it could be formation of such groups as the Windstorm Watershed. And there was a beginning of one for Silver Lake, and I'm hoping that this will be there. And we have the funds, we want to get this going. And I think the example that's going to be set by Winasquaw and the results from what they do will be a good example for others to follow to, hey, that's works, we're going to do that.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes, Mr. Davis.
I think a point of clarification, we did not put any money in last year.
No, we did not.
And the other thing, we talked about, and Silver Lake's very important, do we ever, does our governing body ever meet with Belmont? Belmont has the other side of Silver Lake. And try to do something as a local as opposed to depending on outside agencies and stuff. I mean, you see the importance, the people pay higher taxes because they're waterfront property owners. But do we work with our neighbor in Belmont, Board of Selectmen, saying, what can we do locally? We have the money in here. I imagine the Selectmen are the agents for this also, that they can take money out of this fund?
I think I can probably, no, it's actually the fund is governed by the Conservation Commission. But I would also say that we have given money in the haves for Silver Lake. Part of the problem is that when you take a look at what's happening right now up in Lake Winasquaw, you have an association now which has formed involving five communities. And what's very difficult right now, probably around Silver Lake, is there doesn't seem to be the same kind of, I'm not going to say concern, but at least there has not been an organization that has formed. Because you can't turn around right now and just simply hand money out to individuals who say, oh, I want to work on mill foil. So it really does need to be an association established on Silver Lake in order for them to be able to qualify for this kind of money. Does that answer your question?
It does. And I support this article. I don't think it's enough money. I truly think that we should be, because if we don't protect it like it's been stated, we're going to lose it. And once you lose it, you're going to lose your fish, you're going to lose everything. And once that, it's going to take forever to get it back. So I think that we're short-sighted ourselves. We spend money on a lot of other things. $2,000 is just all amount of money, but I think it needs to be spent to try and protect it now than wait later.
Thank you. Microphone one.
Helen Hinks, myself, and if I go on to one, you all raise your hands. I've been on the Conservation Commission for a little over a decade. I do want everyone to know, we have made a commitment through our internal process in the Conservation Commission to give money to the watershed. So the $9,000 that are now already has money that will come up to the total of around $2,000, $3,000. So this replaces some of that money, it doesn't increase it much higher. And we have tried to work with Belmont Conservation Commission in the past, certainly always open to engaging anyone in the future. Mr. Davis's point, I think that's very appropriate. We don't have a very good forecast and plan because we're trying to find a good partner. It's hard for us to ask for much more until we have a better plan and partner. But I certainly appreciate your consent. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, let me read this article again. Article 12, to see if the town will vote to raise an appropriate sum of $2,000 to the Lake Improvement/Maintenance Capital Reserve Fund previously established. This appropriation is not included in the operating budget. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. I rule that Article number 12 passes unanimously. Article 13, to see if the town will vote to raise an appropriate sum of $20,000 and no sense for the purpose of replacing the carpet and tile in the downstairs town hall. And I'm going to call on Pat Constantino.
Mr. Moderator, I have an amendment to this motion.
Let's first move and second.
Move Article 313 to the floor for discussion.
And do we have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Catherine Dawson.
I have made a motion to amend the article to see if the town will vote to raise an appropriate sum of $20,000 and no sense for the purpose of replacing the carpet in town in the downstairs of the town hall. This appropriation is not included in the operating budget. That sentence was eliminated in the original warrant article.
So the part in the center with the double asterisk would just simply be moved up and become part of the main motion, which it should have had originally. Any questions? Do we have a second on your amendment? Seconded by John Scanlon. So it's moved and seconded to add the sentence, this appropriation is not included in the operating budget to the main motion. It has been duly moved and seconded. Do we have any questions, comments? Seeing none, all those in favor of taking the sentence which reads, this appropriation is not included in the operating budget and adding it to the main motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Okay, now we're back to the main motion. And the main motion now is to see if the town will vote to raise an appropriate sum of $20,000 and no sense for the purpose of replacing the carpet in the town downstairs of town hall. This appropriation is not included in the operating budget. Now, anyone, Pat, would you like to speak to this?
I would. Notwithstanding, this would be a great parting gift for Joyce. This carpet has been, is a little over 20 years. And anyone that has frequented Town Hall will see that it is not only stained beyond being cleaned, it's sprayed, it's taped together. It's well beyond its use, seen its use. There are offices that we have to cover it, not for it not to be triptazin in between offices. We would like to replace the carpet in the offices, in the hallways, in the conference area, replace that with a high-grade non-slip tile, a BCT tile, so that we can easily clean that up and keep it nice and clean forever. So we have, we sent out a lot of bids for it over the past year, over a lot of years we've been trying to get this passed. Two have come back, and it's very close to the $20,000. It's $19,900 and some odd dollars. We have it right down to the pennies if anybody wants to ask any questions about it. We do have the bids here for us. But it is well over past due. If you've come into Town Hall, you can see the thresholds and wherever you can, it is way past due. Thank you.
Microphone two.
Hi, Jason Wright. I have some depth of career history in the home improvement segment, and my curious is on the carpet, are you going to be going for rolled goods? Are you going to be looking at the commercial industrial carpet tiles? Because it seems like you only get wear in certain areas. Pull a carpet tile and replace it for the next 20 years, amiable, cost-effective. But I don't know what you've quoted it with, it's rolled goods or?
It's rolled in commercial industrial.
Can you follow it?
No, just a comment that I would suggest you get a bid on the carpet tile project too, is you might be able to find it easier to install, save a little labor. It would be a municipal project, not to throw the town shed guys under the bus, but it's easier to work with. It's, you're not displacing the entire office to kick out, kick carpet for rolled goods, but doing the carpet tile stuff. Then you maintain a stock of those and over wear and stain and things like that. You only have to replace certain sections. And it does come in a commercial industrial. But I'd consider you, you ought to take a look at that.
The moderator will recognize Joyce.
I just wanted to thank you for that suggestion, because originally, we were going to be doing more carpeting in the heavily traveled areas, and now the carpeting is just going to be in the offices, so, which don't get as much traffic, public traffic. So that may be, thank you for that suggestion.
Microphone two.
Yes, Scott Davis. Did we, what did we have on reserve fund balance last year? How much did we add at the end of the year?
Let's see. Is that something that Mr. Pearson can respond to?
We had roughly $448,000, and it looks like first glance, we'll add about $30,000.
My question, I guess, if this is important, why did the Selectmen take it out of the unreserved fund balance last year and get it now? I mean, with what, I mean, out of the excess, that's going to look like it's going to go into the unreserved fund balance, $30,000?
Is there someone on the Select Board that would like to respond to that? Catherine?
The Selectmen felt that we should bring it before this body to vote, rather than taking it out of the unreserved fund balance.
Well, you wouldn't take it out of the unreserved, you're going to take it out of the surplus.
Well, the surplus, yes. But we felt that this body should vote on it. This is something that we've been talking about, I suppose, 10, 10 years?
And that's my point, Catherine.
And so when we finally decided, yes, we needed to do it, it has looked out its lifespan. The vote from the Selectmen was granted before the body is informed.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, oh yes, Rich Wilson. Sorry, I said one little comment. Not an expert on carpeting or flooring or anything, but $20,000 sounds like an awful lot of money, and I hope we can find a cheaper solution to do it, last little longer. Not an expert. The moderator recognizes Mr. Scanlon.
One of the expensive parts is that we have to move things like large saves, have people commit for that. The other thing is, is as we all know, all buildings, once you pull up the carpet, the floor needs underlayment and that, and making sure it's sturdy. And we're putting down the tiles in the area that used to be carpet, so that's going to be really, really rugged. Yeah, it's expensive. We insisted that we got a lot of bids on that one.
Anyone else? Certainly don't want to rush anyone. Okay, seeing no other questions, Article 13, see if the town will vote to raise an appropriate sum of $20,000 and no sense for the purposes of replacing the carpeting- sum of twenty thousand dollars and no cents for the purposes of replacing the carpet and tile in the downstairs of the Town Hall. This appropriation is not included in the operating budget." All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay.
Yes.
Motion passes.
You get the first dance on the couch.
Article 14. I'm gonna read everything, and then I'm gonna make a suggestion for this group. "To see if the town will vote to raise appropriate the budget, committee's recommended sum of five million, six hundred, one thousand, six hundred and one dollars for the municipal operating expenses, operations, excuse me. The board of selectmen recommended the sum of five million, six oh two, six oh one for the general municipal operations." Um, it is the job adherent, the town meeting, in order to present two you for the vote. The budget being presented by the budget committee, even though it is showing the second one. So, I'm gonna ask to have the second sentence just put down below in parentheses, so you know what their recommended budget amounts are, and I'll let them speak to it. And that would also mean that the recommended, that line in blue below, the recommended amount singular does not include special or individual warrant articles. May I do that without objection? Okay, let's consider that the main warrant article is the first sentence. "To see if the town will vote to raise appropriate the sum of the budget committee recommended sum of five million, six hundred, one thousand, six hundred and one dollars for the general municipal operations." And I'm gonna call on Jane Alden. Jane Alden? Yeah? I'll come to you.
Hi. This year, we, uh, oh, I, I moved the articles to four percent.
Okay, moved by Jane Alden, seconded by Wayne Brock, and now I will, uh, Jane, you have up to five minutes to speak.
Okay. Mr. Moderator, may I amend that motion? May I amend the motion, the motion, the article?
We can either speak to it, then you can amend the motion.
Okay, the, uh, the motion on the floor is the budget committee's motion is pointed out, which is why this is presented at Town Meeting. And, um, just wanted to say a couple of things. Number one, we met with all department heads. Uh, we took everything line by line, uh, with many of the meetings where we had the selectmen present as well, and we had public hearing. And in the future, I'd like to recommend that people come to the public hearing. It was quite heated because of, um, people asking questions, and we got those questions answered there to the satisfaction of the people who were at the public hearing. So, I would just like to urge everybody in the future to come to the public hearings, talk about the budget, because I think you'll find out more that way. Okay? So, the, the budget that we have recommended for this year is five million, six hundred, one thousand, six hundred and one dollar. Attorney question?
Okay, the moderator I'm gonna recognize is Pat Constantino.
Mr. Moderator, I would like to increase the bottom-line budget committee's recommended budget by the sum of nineteen thousand, five hundred dollars for the purchase of purchasing additional salt for the highway department. Line item oh one, eighty-two dash four, three, one, two, dot nine, nine, dash seven hundred, winter and salt and sand. Current amount budgeted in this line item is thirty-five thousand, five hundred.
At this point, Pat, you just gotta move, a move to amend the budget by increasing it by nineteen thousand, five hundred dollars. Do you have a second?
Seconded by Ashley.
Seconded by Ashley St. John. Okay, now, Pat, with explanation, please.
The current amount budgeted in this line item is thirty-five thousand, five hundred. Approximately forty-six thousand, five hundred and forty-eight has been expended to date due to the recent extreme weather conditions. The nineteen thousand, five hundred requested will increase the line item to fifty-five thousand, which will bring us through the remainder of the year. We all know there's another storm coming next week, maybe two, Wednesday and Friday, and we've just about depleted our salt and sand.
Do we have anyone who would like to speak? Two or four questions about the amendment to add nineteen thousand, five hundred dollars to Article number fourteen? All right, microphone one?
Quite a clarification. The town report says the budget committee's approved budget is five thousand, six hundred and two, six oh one, and that the selectman is the five thousand, six oh one, six oh one. I'm confused as to, are we approving the budget committee or are we working on something here?
I'm, I'm gonna let.
It's correct.
Bob is correct?
That's correct.
So, I guess we're going to have to go back because without objection, you allowed me to switch the two around. So, I think at this point, it would be appropriate, since we have what's already not only printed in the town report, but what was up here, to go ahead and amend the main motion to reflect the correct figures. Any disagreement? Okay, then who would like to amend the main motion? Which would be Article 14, to say if the town will vote to raise an appropriate sum of five million, six oh two, six oh one for the, for the municipal, general municipal operations. I need a motion for that.
I'll make a motion that we add a thousand dollars to reflect five million, six hundred, two thousand, six hundred and one dollars for the budget committee recommended.
Okay, so right now, we will leave the wording on the first one in place, but we're gonna amend it by adding one thousand dollars to make it five million, six oh two. Any questions? Okay, I'll read this, then we'll vote. We, oh, yeah, a second? Peter Fogg, moved by Tim, seconded by Peter. Article 14, to see if the town will vote to raise appropriate the sum of the budget committee recommended amount of five million, six hundred and two thousand, six oh one for general municipal operations. Now, this is an amendment. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Okay, so now Article 14, um, has been amended. Now, um, we've in the past always had this thing, you can never amend an article that has, uh, without having disposed of another amendment first. So, I'm now gonna go back to Pat for her amendment to the balance, for the original balance, now, which is five million, six oh two, and she is going to, uh, again, move her amendment. Pat, do that one more time.
Mr. Moderator, I move to increase the bottom-line budget, um, committee's recommended budget by the sum of nineteen thousand, five hundred dollars for the purchase of purchasing additional salt for the highway department. Line item zero one dash eight two dash four, three, one, two, dot nine, nine, dash seven hundred, winter, salt and sand.
And the second is Ashley. Okay, so now we're back to the original, um, motion of the five million, six oh two, six oh one, and the amendment is to add additional nineteen thousand, five hundred. Uh, is there any discussion on the amendment? Seeing none, then let me pose a question. Moved by Pat Constantino, seconded by Ashley St. John, to increase the bottom-line budget of, budget committee's recommended budget by the sum of nineteen thousand, five hundred dollars for the purpose of purchasing additional salt for the highway department, which is line item zero one dash eight two dash four, three, one, two, dot nine, nine, dash seven dot seven, dash seven hundred, winter, salt and sand. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The total, uh, excuse me, the amendment passes, so that now takes the five million, six oh two, six oh one, and to that, you have to add the nineteen thousand, five hundred. We have our experts with their.
Five million, six twenty-two, one oh one.
Yeah, five million, six twenty-two, one oh one, and that does not include the amounts that had been previously added. Did somebody else total all those up? Tim?
The, the others total. The warrant articles approved totaled one hundred and fifty-one thousand, but that does not get added to the operating budget. So, any amendments made to the operating budget will state that.
Okay, so right now, Article 14 will be to see if the town will vote to raise an appropriate, the budget committee recommended sum. It's now up to five million, six twenty-two, one hundred and one for general municipal operations. Any questions, comments, debate? Seeing none, oh, here we go. A race to the microphones.
Um, I brought this up at the budget hearing, and I was, and it was stated to me that it shouldn't be brought to the board of selectmen, but I, I think, I thought it over about going to the board of selectmen, and I thought the proper place would be to come here at the town meeting, where it was stated in two thousand fifteen. Underline, line item, uh, and I believe I'm on the right one, correct me if I'm off. Zero one, seventy, four, two, one, oh, point three, oh, dash one, thirty. That's the dispatch for the PD, support staff. I think that's where it is. Is that correct?
Yeah.
In two thousand fifteen, um, there was some changes within personnel at the, uh, or two thousand fourteen, I should say, when we came to the meeting in two thousand fifteen, March, uh, there was some change in personnel, and it was stated by, uh, the board of selectmen at the time, that they heard us loud and clear that they weren't going to do that again. And when they were looking at an assistant for diary, they went ahead and they waited and they brought it to the town meeting. This is the only chance that we get as, as townspeople to at our business meeting. And they did what they said they were gonna do in two thousand fifteen for two thousand sixteen. They waited, they brought, uh, the land use assistant technician, uh, part-time position forward. The people discussed it, and we voted it through. I guess the concern I have is, we've seen, when I went to the budget hearing and asked this question, we see a huge increase in our dispatch, local dispatch, and to offset some of the costs, we're reducing the patrol officer in the process. I asked that question, and I, it was stated that it wasn't a budget committee's question, it was a board of selectmen's question. But in reality, I feel it's, it's a town of Tilton at our business meetings question because we were promised something from the board of selectmen, legislative body was, that they heard us, that they weren't going to do that again. But here we come this year, two thousand eighteen, three years later, and the same things happened. They've indebted us for, whether right, wrong or indifferent, they've indebted us for the dispatch system without the vote of the legislative body. So, here we are, if we vote to, if I vote to make an adjustment on this line, I'm the bad guy because I'm bringing it, instead of us having an honest discussion about this here before they make that decision. And I guess I'd just say, I hope this doesn't happen in the past, in the future, I mean, as it's happened in the past.
Microphone two?
Send help, so is it? I'm into Lancaster Hill Road. On page thirty-six of the budget, printed here in YAMO, has a department called Reappraisal of Property, um, asking for thirty-seven thousand, five hundred dollars. I wanna know what's the difference between that and reevaluation that we voted on, and twenty thousand.
Okay, who do we have over here that's gonna answer this? Joyce?
Uh, the, the annual appropriation is for general assessing services. We have a certified assessor that we contract with. So, we're, and over and above the regular general assessing duties that we do, um, we also do data verification of a certain percentage in the town each year, which is the lister goes out to each home and lists list and tries to get into a visual inspection and just to make sure that the data is correct on the assessment card. And by doing that, by spreading that task out over four years, it makes it much cheaper than doing it all at once. If we were to do it all at once in two thousand nineteen, the bill would be like way, way over two hundred thousand dollars. So, we spread it out, the same amount every year until the last year, which is when they do what's called the update. And that involves a process of taking on all the data that they've collected, all the sales data, they recalculate lot rates, all the depreciation schedules. Everything's based on valid sales, that's really the most lengthy part of it. Then, once they recalculate everything, they have to go back out and drive through and visually look at every parcel to make sure that the assessments are valid, meet with selectmen, because it's an involved process. Every step of that process is monitored by the New Hampshire Department of Government Administration. So, it's building up to this that will be done in, on two thousand nineteen, where everyone's values will change.
Anyone else? Seeing no, no one else, let me read this one more time, and then we'll go for a vote to see if the town will vote to raise the sum of appropriate the budget committee's recommended sum, which is now at six, five million, six hundred, twenty-two thousand, one hundred and one dollars for the general municipal operations. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Article fourteen passes, and I so declare. Article fifteen, to see if the town is interested in allowing one hundred percent of the island park, and I'm gonna call on John Scanlon.
I'd like to move Article thirteen to the floor for discussion.
Do we have a second? Seconded by Jason. Seconded by Jason. Okay, John?
Okay, so, this is kind of a, an interest, in seeing what the interest is in it. Presently, we share the island with Northfield, and, well, Northfield's not quite the same stewards as we are of the park, and there's not a lot of interest. And if you try to drive past on Sundays, you can see all the people who come from Tilton and park over there and go into it. It's provided quite a bit of enjoyment for everybody in Tilton. It's, it's a big focal point, brings people into our town. There's many weddings that happen there, there's people out there walking around, we take care of the disabled, great volunteers have been building a lot of this. We've also put money aside for engineering and for repairs on it to keep it from washing away, which it's currently starting to do, or has been for a while. And so, we're looking to find out from the voters, if you own Tilton, along with Northfield, is there interest in turning this over to Tilton? Because we've been such good stewards, and we have much more interest in it. And the soil came from Town Hall, it was filled in the river. It's, it's our soil, it's our community that enjoys it, we all take care of it. And Northfield does a lot of other things to take care of, and just not quite cutting it. So, I, I would like to encourage that we can do that, so we can preserve the island, keep it in the state that it's in, and, um, it's a part, part of our town. Thank you.
And I'm assuming that everyone here knows that there's a warrant on, in Northfield, uh, that they would be willing uh, that they would be willing to, uh, give the town of Tilton the island. And so, of course, if that doesn't pass, it's probably kind of a moot point anyway. Any questions or comments? Scott?
Yeah, uh, a concern I have is, you know, we, we have, uh, on page seventy in the book, we have five hundred sixty-six thousand seven hundred dollars valuation of our town. And we spent over six hundred thousand dollars on Riverfront Park. Uh, it's a beautiful park, uh, has handicap accessibility, uh, bathroom accessibility, there doesn't have to be a court of body. Um, the concern I have is if we take over ownership, is this going to become, as John stated, it's a man-made island. Mother Nature's going to try to take it back. We're going to fight Mother Nature every day. And how much money are we going to spend? Uh, I don't believe the island is handicap accessible, correct me if I'm wrong, I, I don't believe that, that bridge is ADA compliant. Uh, it's too steep going down the backside, you have to go one inch or every foot, and the, the height is just too much. So a concern I have, I think the summer concerts are great, I support them, pull high. But a concern I have, wouldn't it be best to have the summer concerts at the Riverfront Park? I hope that family put that, the Z O there. But in the future, because of the accessibility to the handicapped individuals, accessibility to elderly, I think Riverfront Park seems to make a lot more sense to us if we're going to continue. I know it's twenty-five years ago when they started, uh, Riverfront Park wasn't there. But I do have a concern that we're a small community, we have a lot of land, we have parks already, uh, and what is this going to entail in tax dollars?
Microphone two.
No plus, we're going in. Quick responses, Scott, there's no shade in the other park and that can be a little rough on people. But my real question is the fact that, vaguely in the back of my mind, I seem to recall that there was a problem with how that island was originally given to the two towns. Are we, and according to what I remember is that each town had to have it and it can't be dissolved. Has that been looked into? Is it a problem? I, I just don't know.
I'm going to call on Catherine. Russ.
It does say in the deed that the town, um, the two towns own the park, the island jointly. The language is such, if one town turned down the park and I don't want it, it would revert back to the owners. There is a process that we'd have to go through if the town of Tilton was going to own it by itself. And I believe that process is to ask the heirs of the Tilton family if the town of Tilton could own it separately from the town of Northfield. So that would have to make a place.
Jason, you haven't spoken on this one yet.
No, no, take a swing, I'm all rested up. Um, I'll tell you what, I mean, as much as I see Riverfront Park, I, I see that it's, you know, we're trying to force use on it and, you know, there was a lot of us that didn't want that million dollar park and, uh, the cost exceeded that. But Riverfront Park, I mean, we don't want to lose that. And I understand, I mean, it's difficult to do something as simple as putting down rocks back in place without Northfield's cooperation. So I think this is a step in the right direction. If it's owned by one entity, I think it's going to be easier to even do just the simplest maintenance, uh, to preserve it. Um, it may be easier for us to go and seek either state or federal money to work, to, you know, to help offset those costs. I don't think it's a complicated thing to just to preserve what's there. And I think I'd like to see in the future, if we, if it was owned by one body or the other, you know, it was one single municipality, it might be easier to adopt a fee schedule and a use schedule and, you know, by donation, if somebody wants to get married there and they're a resident, they want to make a donation, great, if they can't, that's fine, it's a park they use. But the concert series, that's a moneymaker. Uh, I'm here to tell you, they're not, they're not too transparent with that, but there's some income being generated out that property. And the Tilton, down Tilton, if we owned it, it's a priority, we should be able to, you know, get a donation off, off of that income. So, um, I'm all for it because I think it's the only way to go in order to preserve it because it's, it's too difficult to try to play ball with another town because they, they have different views.
Microphone one.
Hi, Ken Norrington from East Main Street, and, um, I get that it's probably a lot similar to have one town own it for the sake of stewardship and, and maintenance. I'd just like to speak to the whole notion of community. And so many areas in our society right now, we see the breakdown of community. And our communities have been tied together. Here's, we share a library, we share a community center, we share other things. And maybe it's worth the extra effort to work together to continue to, to build that sense of community.
Microphone two.
Marion Abbott. I am in total agreement with the gentleman who said something about the shade at Riverside Park. After I'm down, there will probably be nice shade when those trees get bigger. But right now, it's very, very hot if it's sunshining to go to Riverside Park. I'm a senior citizen and I feel like I really enjoy the island park. Um, also, people from Northfield don't have any access to park from Northfield. And I'm guessing they're going to vote to give it to Hilton simply because of that.
Microphone two.
Amy Westen, Tilton. Uh, my just curious, has the board of selection or representative, um, discussed the deed property and with whether or not, uh, Northfield will be able to allow us to be as well.
Did anyone respond?
We've been formally in, discussed it with the lawyer, yes.
So it's, it's something that would be doable?
Could be peaceful, yes.
The only other thing I would say is, we all know that, I think each and every one of us have been to, uh, the island. It's beautiful out there, it's very peaceful, it's cool. And the concerts every year, we get far more than just the Hilton people who come, everybody enjoys. I hope you will consider this. Thank you.
Microphone two.
Pat Clark, Kale Hill Road. I too am in favor of, uh, owning the park by ourselves. My, my concern is that maybe we're putting the cart before the horse. It might be worthwhile to find out if it's a definite okay for us to, um, own the park by ourselves instead of splitting it up, uh, from the two towns' ownership. Because if we do split it up, and the people that are the heirs, I think there are three of them might talk to Pat, I think, about this. Uh, I think there are three heirs, if they decide, well, they'd like to have that park for whatever reason, it, it might be a real problem. So I think that needs to be worked out first. Um, the other thing is that, uh, the, uh, the Riverfront Park not only has handicap accessibility, but it also has parking, which is something that Pat, I don't believe we brought up, but the parking that happens, congestion that happens down at the island park, which I really love the storied features and history of that park, it would be great to have it. But the, the parking really is a problem at the island park. Uh, and it, um, packs down the people that are businesses there, the Cumberland Farms, Pizza Place, and so forth, they don't have any parking because it's all taken. That's, that's a real consideration, uh, for that. And, uh, so I would consider, I would like the selectmen to consider before we split up with Northfield, to at least check out and make sure that it is a go with the three heirs.
If I'm not mistaken, I believe the warrant article here just says to see if the town is interested in owning a hundred percent. At this point, there was no real commitment. I don't believe we are committed in saying, yes, we definitely want to take it and yes, we'll go through all the legal processes. So I think at this point, I think the, if this motion should pass, and I could be wrong, but I would suggest that if this passes, you got to first of all, see what Northfield does. I think it would probably take another year before we would possibly even consider taking real ownership if we disagree. I'm just trying to clarify it a little.
Respect the clarification here when you're charted that rather than.
Okay, then I'll ask the select board, what is the intent of interested in owning? Ann Konstantin.
The, the warrant article is only to see if you're interested in owning it. I guess we can just.
Well, microphone, if you answer that question, I'll go to microphone two. I'm sorry.
I just, right at the end of School Street, I have a very quick question. One of the things I need to know if I'm interested in owning the park is, here it says, town of Northfield is considering convey. Conveying and giving are two very different things. Giving is free, conveying means money. So, you know what I'm saying? I keep hearing, I prefer to moderate or say give, but it's part of the, the question is whether Northfield is not handing it over, or if they want to sell it to us, or how much is the straightening out of the title for it to come.
That's a very good point. One night, wife and I were talking about this, my wife was convinced that Northfield, they want to do anything, they're going to try to sell it to us, that would be a moment for both of you. So I think the, the article here, unless there's anyone else, it says, are we interested? Okay, Article fifteen, let me go back and read it one more time and then we can either continue discussion, vote, or whatever, to see if the town is interested in owning one hundred percent of the island park. Scott?
So point of clarification, are, so if we say yes on this article, does that mean the, the governing body will come back to the legislative body with a definite yes in the future? Is that what this means?
Uh, according to Pat.
That's, that's exactly what it means. We want to get a feel for if you're interested or not. We will go back, we will look at the details, we will see how Northfield, uh, fares through their warrant article. If it's definite no, then, then it's futile. We're just going to say no, this isn't, we're not going to pursue it any further. We are going to, if you say yes, and Northfield say yes, we're going to pursue, we're going to go back to town meeting next year and say, this, these are the details, this is how it's going to happen, this is how it can be conveyed, and the wording they cannot, doesn't necessarily mean money. It can indeed back in the way Tilton meant it, but it can't be money, can't be sold, goes back to the heirs. So, so this, this hasn't even been back to that point, but I really need to express something in the history. We work really closely, and I want to address Ken's on community, we work very closely with Northfield. And we have, over the years, it's a shared resource, they help us with the mowing and so on and so forth. The retaining wall is washing away, we're going to lose that island. For years, we've come to you and asked you to put money away for engineering, and we've done that over the years to the tune of sixty thousand dollars down, we've gotten in the reserve fund for retaining wall. And every year, we put that on the warrant, every year, Northfield puts it on the warrant and every year, they vote it down, we vote it yes. And it sits there and they do nothing and we do something. And we, we're trying to get them to act on, trying to help us fix the wall so our island doesn't work, work away. Everything else, we work together on. Uh, they use the island just as much as we use the island. It's a, it's a wonderful community, very spirited island, it's beautiful up there. So in the past, working with selectmen over there, our selectmen working with their selectmen, they said, geez, you know, in the past, they've said, wish, we wished we, we would open. And so we said, let's work on it. And we said, how would the people feel about that? Well, we don't know. We'll put it in a war zone. Here it is, in a war zone, means nothing more, nothing less than that. We don't want to separate ties with Northfield, we want to work with Northfield, we're community-oriented, always having, always looking. We just want to get a feel of what it is, we don't know the details. We'll bring the details back to you. That's what it means.
Okay, any other comments or questions? Joyce? Joyce, Joyce, and then Julie.
Uh, yeah, Pat did touch upon it. Uh, over the years, the Northfield selectmen and the Northfield budget committee and the Northfield town administrator have had regular conversations with our board saying, geez, you know, it'd be nice if, if the Tilton could take over the ownership of the island. And speaking on, so we are working cooperatively. Um, and see, Tilt, uh, Northfield has the Tilton Arch, so, and, which is a park. So the town of Northfield manages that park, so people come into Tilton and say, oh, we want to do, uh, a wedding or a photo shoot or something up at Arch Park, we say, okay, yeah, they do that. If someone from Northfield wants to use the island, they come here and do our application. So we work together quite closely. And so when I called, um, Northfield to say, hey, the selectmen are thinking about, you know, if you want to find out if your townspeople really do want to give up their ownership, let's each do a warrant article. So jointly, you know, we're, we're doing this. The other thing, um, I wanted to, to delay some fears is that the town of Northfield just went through, it's called a side parade process, with the union church in Northfield that was tied to the heirs of Tilton and in order to sell that. And they were successful, and also the Widdisquaw Regional School District, the school district's attorney did quite a bit of research with the heirs, which was successful, and they were able to convey a ten acre parcel up at the Highland Mountain Bike Park to the, um, the, um, you know, the, the jumps and things went right through school district property. So the information is, is out there, but before we did anything, each town wanted to make sure that it was okay with the voters, that, you know, he wants to do this, and I think, you know, they'll take care of the arch, which is far more expensive, I think, than, than the island.
Microphone one.
Just for a point of clarification.
Julie, Tilton.
We are not allowing the select board to spend any money towards this, we're just getting announced.
I believe at this point, that is all you know.
Fees searches, we're not allowing attorneys to search, there's going to be no fees incurred at this point, just to get.
They are in agreement that there are no.
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 So this is going to cost us money. So if, if you tell us that you're interested in owning the island, there are some expenses to get, there's probably some attorney, there's not a lot of expenses, but that's what we go forward and do. We, we, you know, go through the process of owning the island, you know, and if there's no money involved in buying the island, we would go forward and have more deal, convey it to us, once we're not buying it from them. Um, without coming back here, we can have public hearings and our meetings, but there, there will be some costs, not huge, but costs. We're certainly not buying it, we did agree on it. We have no idea. But we have no idea of a cost estimate. Twenty thousand attorney's fees, five dollars notices in the paper. We don't have any of those costs. As Joyce said, there happened some transactions, a lot of huge. My hope, my hope, as a board member, as we're just visiting Northfield and share the cost of the Chinese group's right.
I'm going to interject right here for a moment because I'm a little confused. A little earlier, we said, I believe the question was brought up, and I could be wrong, that you're not going to do anything without coming back to this body later. Did I not hear that? And if that's the case, and they're willing, I guess, to give, give us the island, I would assume that if there are going to be any costs incurred, I would think, my opinion, that you would need to come back here before going out and hiring an attorney and then taking over possession of the island. But if I'm wrong, uh, clarify that because if this group's going to vote on this, I think they need to know which way you're going to go.
So if this body says, yes, we're interested in owning the island, and the board of selectmen doesn't go forward and spend some money on attorney's fees or incidental funds, there really isn't a whole lot for us to do to share. and spend some money on attorney's fees or incidental funds, there really isn't a whole lot for us to do this year. Can we come back next year? I mean, any money that we spend is going to be within the budget approved, or we have the lines for legal. It would be within that. It wouldn't be extra money from the budget, but, right? So, like I said, if we're not going to buy it from Northfield, we, they, we have to own it. We'll go through that process. We can have public hearings. It's certain that is likely. So when we, before we take deed to it, the board of selectmen, we've got those public hearings, so that townspeople can come and say, okay. So when the selectmen worked on their budget, we put in the line item for legal. Did they add enough in there for that? Did you figure enough for what we would need? Right. We put a yes to this.
Scott?
Mr. Moderator, I'm very confused. We said just a little bit ago, or we were told just a little bit ago, that nothing will happen until town meeting. If you have an hour hearing, that you could possibly take ownership after you have public hearings. What is it? Are we going to wait until we come back to our business meeting and let the people decide whether we want to expand or whether we want to take the island from Northfield? Or are we going to have public hearings, and then the board of selectmen in the mid-time decide they want to take over the island without the vote of the townspeople? I'm getting two different, and then the other side of it. I'm getting that we're not going to separate ties with Northfield, but then a town of New Spring stands up and says that we're going to maintain the island solely. I, I don't know where we are. It's all over the place.
Microphone two.
I'll be again. I think this is an interesting discussion because on the one hand, the sideboard opposed this warrant is, is coming to the town and saying, we need to vote guidance. On the other hand, if these questions of are any expenditures involved, if we voted against this, it basically is saying to the select people, don't come to us with a question of guidance. Only come back to us if you really have a plan and you've spent money to create. So I think, one of the questions involved here is, do we want to set precedent for the select board to come and ask for these indications of interest? So I think the reaction that, oh, if, if we say yes, then you can't do anything for another year bogs everything down. So I guess suggesting is that I'd rather be asked ahead of time and delegate some of the responsibility for making some progress in entering the select.
Moderator recognizes John Scanlon.
Okay, so we're, we don't get too confused here. Before next town meeting, we will not own the island solely. Period. Do I have a consensus? Lightman? You have mine? Oh, I think some of the others, like, um, but there could be some very minimal costs to do a little bit of the research. I think, Julia, you're a realtor, and, you know, sometimes there's a little bit of cost, but it's not going to be getting a deed, conveying the deed and all that stuff. That comes after we bring it to the town meeting next year and says, hey, we can do it. We found out, we, this is how we're going to do it. This is what's going to cause, this will cost us all the numbers. And then we'll say, yeah, we're going to go ahead. We're going to get the, the island. Or no, we don't want it. That's the way it is. Bottom line, we're not going to own the island before next meeting. That's my decision, um, personally.
Okay, Catherine, and then I'd like to get to the votes.
Sir, what you're saying is, board of selectmen, before they came here, didn't make a decision one. We will not own the island until we come back to this body. But each one of us can say to you, which, not as board of selectmen, or not in meeting, that if what we're hearing is, you don't want us to own the island, whether it costs anything or not, you want us to go back next year with a plan, Ira and John will say to you as a selectman, that will need to be my vote at any selectman's meeting about purchasing the island or owning it. I will pass my votes that we come back to this body and ask them first. Selectmen here, they can either make that promise to you or not, but not as board of selectmen, that will take the place of me.
Microphone two.
Since Martha Anderson, again. So I would love to own the island. Personally, I think it's a great idea. Um, is it too late to amend the articles if a town decides to see the time of interest? If we're all here, we all can express our opinion and just put an amount of that money. Is it too late to do that, to say?
Until, listen, until, until the article has been voted on, it is not too late to amend it. But if you have something, if you want to amend it, you need to put that in writing with your signature and give it to the town clerk. And if you do that, then you'll have an amendment so long as it gets seconded, and then we can vote on the amendment.
Without more feedback from the rest of the people here, I wouldn't have any idea how much they think it would cost.
That's your choice, okay?
Point of order, Mr. Moderator. We've already passed our budget, and we would not notice that this was going to be a money warrant. So I don't believe we can put money in. I don't believe that anyone is asking you to put money into it. Okay, I'll tell you what. Let's go ahead and vote on this thing. Everybody ready? Without objection, Article 15, to see if the town is interested in owning 100% of Island Park. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Article 15 passes, and I so declare. Uh, I'm going to give the police chief a couple of minutes here.
Thank you, Chuck. Um, Joyce, can you come up for a second, please? I just want to, before we close, so, uh, we kind of came to Tilton together, so I kind of feel like we're part, we're kind of partners. And, um, it's, it's a sad year for us because I'm losing a friend, a partner, and, and someone who's been by my side since I came to Tilton. The amount of work she does behind the scenes, no one has any idea of, probably the department heads and the board of selectmen. But she puts in long days, 12, 14-hour days all the time to keep the town running. And, um, I know because we trade emails sometimes at nine o'clock at night, or five in the morning. Um, and I just can't thank her enough on behalf of the Police Department for all she's done for us and for me as a partner and a friend. And so I wanted to take a minute to publicly say thank you at the board of selectmen. I told her she has to, uh, let me come up on the island and convey this summer. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Uh, one other little, a couple of little small items. Uh, Tim, are you the one that put together the, uh, the information on, uh, the recycling? Yes. I don't believe that was given to me in time in order to put it up on a slide. Would you like to talk about it at all? Who? Joyce, do you want to? There is, you know, after going through the recycling and the solid waste, and then getting rid of the bags, and this and that and the other thing, I think it's important that you at least get, get the information that Joyce is going to give you.
Well, we've, uh, we haven't quite completed our first full year of fully automated, because we didn't start until last July. But our total tonnage for the whole year for 2017 is up. Uh, in 2017, and sorry, sorry, 2016, it was 1,076 total tons. That's both solid waste and recycling. And in 2017, it went up to 1,219. Uh, so total tonnage is up. Um, recycling tonnage is down, and our solid waste tonnage increased somewhat. So I think what we, as I said, we still haven't had a full year of fully automated, but I think the economy is much better, and people are feeling more positive. So we're seeing that reflected in our trash because people are purchasing more. And I think maybe one of the other constraints is, um, many people have asked for additional recycling bins. I think that's something that we, the selectmen may have to look at and consider. Uh, because right now, each, um, uh, residence and, uh, business gets one refuse bin and one recycling bin. And, um, I would say that it was a smooth, much smoother rollout than the, than the first time we tried recycling. And I encourage everybody that if you have questions, you know, you're not picked up, or they put your bin back in the wrong place, or whatever your concern is, is that you call Bernard directly. If you don't get satisfied, then please call us, and then we will follow up. We will get much quicker service. Because what they'll say a lot of times is, put your trash out on Friday, and we'll come by on a Friday. Well, you know, they can tell you that directly. They're trying to, you know, us trying to get the information, get quicker, satisfactory response to your concern.
I, is there anyone else yet? I, I have one or two very short announcements.
I have a question, Mr. Moderator. Um, you think we're in relative the same as far as recycling and solid waste? Because we actually now include the mobile home parks, like, I think we all just have a good idea. Do you think that, I mean, are we pretty much on track from what we were, what we've been included for pickups?
Scott, just one quick question to Joyce. Do we have the percentage of, uh, recycling compared to the percentage of trash? Because as Chuck stated, since we've added all of the trailer parks and the elderly housing down at Jensen, which wasn't on before, are kind of just going to be up anyway because of that? That was never on there before. What is the percentage? I gave Scott the, so we're still at the table. Mr. Moderator, according to this, we're still way above what the national average, when they roll out recycling. Because we were hoping, we were hoping at the best to hit, uh, 30%, and over this, we're over 30%. So we're much greater than what, uh, we had hoped, or when we rolled out the paper, page and throw with the bags, recycling. So the program, and I, I have to say, I think the program's working great, and we don't have the trash, and the animals getting in the trash. We stopped all of that, so it's cleaned up and down now. Thank you.
I've got one short one, and then I'm going to let Pat make a couple of quick ones. And then, uh, at the end of the meeting, I'm going to just mention right now, all those who are newly elected town officials will need to come down here at the end of the meeting so they can be sworn in by the town clerk. Uh, I'm going to take this liberty right now. I wanted to just congratulate Helen Hanks, if you didn't know it. But my assistant moderator, Helen, member of the Conservation Commission, was appointed Commissioner of Corrections for the state of New Hampshire. Something in this day and age with all the politics, to have one of our hometown people here appointed to such a powerful position, I think is terrific. Thank you. Okay. Okay, Pat.
Thank you, Chuck. I personally want to thank our staff, our town health staff, Tim, Joyce, Gail, for putting all the work that they do to get here today. It's an amazing job, long hours, the town report. Amazing, amazing cover by Joyce, Tim, and Gail. Um, that, from our, our hearts to yours. Thank you, thank you, thank you for putting in all that work. And also, the police explorers and youth assistance program from the bottom of my heart. This year, they have put an amazing amount of hours into our aging population. Uh, they have been out there with the air conditioning program, shoveling, uh, the snow. We all know what kind of a season this has been. They've been right out there painting, doing odds and ends for our seniors, helping them to stay in their houses a little bit longer. So, thank you.
If nothing else, a motion to adjourn would be in order. So moved by Jason.
Sir Ben.
Seconded by Eric, Ira. All those in favor? Opposed, nay. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much. Official time is 11:12.